It is seven o'clock, so if we could call our workshop to order and thank you for those who did come. If you did not get a handout, there are handouts in the back of the room that you could get, and those are the same handouts that we have. And we will, our layout for tonight is we will have the Title IX updates presented by Mrs. Van Etten. When she's done speaking, the board will have about five minutes to ask some questions. We just want to keep those questions short so we can keep it moving out of respect for our guests from Safe Futures. And then we have Curriculum Connections by Mrs. Butler. And then we have Safe Futures Partnership for, and Kathy is here to help present that tonight. And then after that, we will have public comment related to this agenda. We'd love your feedback on some of the stuff we have done so far, and if you have ideas for us to put forth for the future, we would love to have those as well. This is only our beginning point. We had hoped to have the OCA report and the recommendations so that we could move on that all at one time, but that, we can't wait anymore. So the, everything that the high school and the administration is already doing, we want to make sure people hear about that. And then, this is just a starting point. Once we get the OCA report, we'll add those recommendations and actions into what we've already done. And any suggestions from the community, from students, parents, to add to what we're in process of doing, we would love to hear that. We want feedback from everybody because that's how this will be able to move forward and have some positive influence on everyone involved. So first up, we have Mrs. Van Etten.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, good.
I want to start by thanking you to have, giving me this opportunity to speak tonight. Yeah. You might have to hold it. How's that? Better. Okay. So, thank you for having me speak tonight. I'm hoping that the focus of my presentation will address some of the questions that the board had. I had an opportunity to preview those ahead of time, and so I'm hoping that throughout the presentation, we'll touch upon all of those. Really, in this presentation, my attempt is to address all of our stakeholders. So we've been talking a lot about different people and their questions that they have. So throughout the presentation, I'm going to address initiatives and training related to our administration, talk about our staff in that same category, and then talk about some programming that we're going to be doing for students and for parents. And so I'm hoping that by the end, that'll kind of encompass all of those stakeholders and then address any additional questions that any of you have. So the first topic that I want to talk about is our administrators, and this is really focusing on some additional training that we provided to our building administrators. And I'm going to start with probably the most important, which is the Title IX Coordinator Training. We were able to send all of our building principals and our assistant principals to the State Department of Education's two-day Title IX Training. They all attended this training in October of this year, of 2019, I should say. It's important to note that this extends well beyond the state requirement, which is to have only one Title IX Coordinator trained in the district. So this allows myself as the lead Title IX Coordinator to designate the building administrators to take over that role in terms of launching investigations, knowing when they have a Title IX issue, being able to identify those needs within their buildings. So it's providing a great deal of support in that area. And again, of course, that training is very important. That training included recognizing sexual harassment, misconduct, and also conducting investigations. So it was a two-day training, really that second day focused solely on how to conduct investigations. However, one of the concerns with this training, and we actually provided this feedback directly to the state Title IX Coordinator, and we also had an opportunity to provide this feedback to the OCA when she visited, is that that Title IX Training does not address any issues related to students and staff. So it is purely scenario-based student-on-student issues. So that was a concern that we shared. So we've done some additional training with our administrators, really to specifically address those issues of misconduct by school personnel. We've received some guidance documents from the United States Department of Education that provided us some information on that, and I'm going to talk about some additional pieces with regard to that. In addition to the Title IX Training, all of our administrators have been through an online two-hour course, and that is an e-learning course that's provided by Kerma, our insurance carrier. They have an incredible library of online individual courses that people can take. So they've all participated in that two-hour training, and that was really specific to their work with staff. But we're also asking people to really think of that in the context of your school building, and you have both staff and students on a regular basis that you're working with. Additionally, we've all completed the DCF-mandated reporter training. We had actually done an updated refresher of that in 2018 in the fall, and the mandate is to complete that every three years, so we're going to be completing it again next fall, so that will be within a two-year timeframe. It's important for me to add that since 2017, we have made mandated reporter training part of our employment process. So as part of completing your packet to start working for us, you have to complete this training. If you go to our website, we have a link to the mandated reporter training. I believe it's under the Personnel tab or Staff Resources tab, and so any of you are welcome to go to that link, and you can take the training yourself. And again, we also have, I'm not sure how many people are aware of this, we have a local DCF representative who is housed at the Stonington Police Department, and so all of our administrators have her phone number, her contact information, and we use her very regularly as a resource. She can help us with some of the more tricky questions related to reporting or any of our interactions with DCF that may arise. The other piece that's been really important is our review of the regulations for completing Title IX investigations. And as I said, we actually had an entire day dedicated to this training at the Title IX program for the state. And so you'll see that really what we're looking to do is to clear up the different steps of that investigation and really define what that should look like. So we're looking at creating a very, it's in a draft form, but a checklist that our administrators will use. So again, this is in a case where a case of sexual harassment has been reported, and these are the steps or these are the aspects of that investigation. So that includes the scope of the investigation, appropriate contacts that the administrator would have throughout the investigation, so that can be everybody from contacting the parent, which is required, to contacting DCF, the parents, and then, of course, me as the Title IX Coordinator. We're also coming up with a list of samples of questions that we would want to ask students in the process of an investigation. And the key word there is "samples" because each of these situations needs to be looked at as an individual situation. So questions I might ask to one student or questions I may ask to an elementary student versus a high school student would obviously be very different. But we're, we're using this guide as kind of what are the key topics and key concepts that we should be asking of our students when they come forward to make a complaint. The other piece is making sure that we're disseminating the appropriate policies and regulations to the complainant, that there's documentation of whatever that student's concerns or complaints were. So we're looking at different ways that we can do that, whether it's having the student scribe to us and revealing, reading that back to the student, if it's age-appropriate, having the student write down what their concerns are and having them confirm that information with us. We also want to make sure that students know what this process looks like. So part of that also is talking to the student about what the next steps are going to be and making sure that their parent is aware of that as well. If it's necessary to put a safety plan in place, as, and this sometimes happens prior to any determination, so you're starting the investigation, if we have a student-on-student complaint, for example, we would want to look on maybe keeping those students apart. So we put safety plans in place. And then at the end of this process, there would be a summative statement. So that's a summary basically provided to the complainant and to the parent that gives information about the conclusion of the investigation. The next piece is really about a consultation and partnership that we're going to begin with Safe Futures. Actually, it's already started, and so we're quite excited about this. The steps that we've taken so far is we've had, our district leadership team has had a consultation meeting with Safe Futures to really talk about what this partnership could look like and how they could help in supporting us moving forward. We've also had a training session with all of our building administrators, actually took place in this room. And in that, this is again, that follow-up of really looking at some of those intricacies or the warning signs of inappropriate relationships, or sometimes you hear the term "grooming." And again, this was a piece that we asked Safe Futures to help us with because we felt that the Title IX Training was really missing that piece. So they've been very committed to helping us with that and understanding all of the nuances of that. And we're planning to have an ongoing partnership to support both our students and staff and our families. And again, I don't want to, I don't want to give an end date to that. It's going to be ongoing, and we're working through the next steps with that right now. And I'll be mentioning that as I move ahead. We also are inviting the DCF representative that I mentioned. She's going to be coming to a leadership team and helping to clarify some of our reporting questions. And I just wanted to kind of add at the end here that this has been an additional 20 hours of training in the area of Title IX. We actually started that Kerma course last March, so this has been from, started back in March, but we've provided additional 20 hours of training for our administrators in this area. So the next piece is really related to staff, and some of this is going to be a repeat from the, what we've done with our administrative team. Again, our staff have all completed the DCF-mandated reporter training, and they will repeat that again in the fall of 2020. Any, again, any person that's been hired since 2017 has to take that upon hiring, so even if they're out of that cycle, they would have had that training. The DCF Caroline posters are posted throughout all of our staff areas. We've had that in place for many years, and that's part of a state statute where we post the Caroline information, phone number, and the DCF website in areas where our faculty, our staff rooms, our staff bathrooms, to make sure that they're reminded of that. Our staff have also completed a Kerma course of their own, which is entitled Sexual Harassment in the Workplace. And our staff at the high school have received some supplemental training on this. So a faculty meeting dedicated to, again, really looking at the subtle nuances of this, some of those, you know, inappropriate behaviors, some scenarios, and really going through also our regulations and policies and making sure they really understand the definitions of sexual harassment and what that means in the environment of a school. And again, all of our coaches, paras, nurses, custodians, et cetera, are going to be completing. This is a training that's actually a new requirement coming down from the state, and it, everybody has to complete this by next October, so our, I'm sorry, this October. So our goal is to have this completed for June. So everybody that works for us will complete this. And this will also be, is already added to our employment checklist. So in order to become employed with us, you have to complete this course. We also have some future planning that we're going to be doing with our staff, and this is going to take place at either faculty meetings or in professional development days. We're really going to be digging into what's called the Professional Code of Conduct for Teachers. This is a brochure, and I can, I wish I had provided it to you. I forgot, but I can get you all copies of that. And this is something that comes out when you first get your teaching certificate, and I believe they send it to you when your renewal comes as well. And there's a big piece of this that is embedded in the team training, which is the training that our new teachers get when they first start. So we're going to be stealing some of the training from that, and we're going to be doing that with all of our teachers. And a lot of that has to do with looking at different scenarios that involve our students and determining which scenarios may be appropriate or inappropriate. Our staff have also received an electronic notification of our sexual harassment policies. That's sent out yearly in the fall. We are also working on another mandate that I wanted to add to this, which is our bullying training mandate. So all of our staff need to be trained in being able to recognize the signs of a student who is being bullied. And so we're working on completing that during the school year. I think we have three out of four schools have completed that. And then, again, for our staff, we're looking, and I know Catherine and Mary Ann are going to speak a little bit more about this later, is looking at providing some support from Safe Futures and having them onsite specifically at the high school to talk to staff and really speak to them about these issues and see how Safe Futures can come in to support them. This next slide is really about a focus, and I've probably already said a few of these things, but it's a focus on our hiring practices and how that relates to new staff that are coming in. Some of the guidance in my studies of looking at Title IX guidance from a federal level is really looking at making sure that you're asking the right questions when you're hiring staff. So we're going to be looking at mandating questions around appropriate boundaries and making sure that the people that we're bringing in have a good understanding of that as part of our interview process. As I mentioned, the new employees are all mandated to take that DCF training. We've also had background checks. This has been a regular part of our employment process for as long as I can remember, and that includes both DCF, federal, and state background checks for all new employees. I already mentioned that new employees will have to take the sexual harassment training. And the other piece is that there is a newer requirement. I think it's two to three years old, where in the state of Connecticut, if you're hired in the role of working with children, they are required to contact your previous employer, even if you were not listed as a reference or provided a letter of reference. I've actually had to fill out a few of these myself on staff that have left and moved on to other positions. So we obviously, people that come to us, will be checking with their former district. So the next section is really about our work with students. And the first piece is making sure that our students are aware of all of our Title IX policies. They're receiving electronic notifications of this. It's in our student handbooks. We also have additional assemblies specifically at the high school and the middle school. We're really pushing to have more of these conversations. And we also have posters at the high school that are hanging up in the student bathrooms and around student areas. We're going to be doing regular sweeps of those because, you know, nothing stays up, so we'll continue to make sure that that information is as posted and accessible as to many places as possible. We also updated this summer a mandated online anonymous reporting tool that we've been using for years, and the state started this many years ago under the guise of bullying. So it was intended to be a method for students to report anonymously if they were witness to or recipient of bullying. What we've done is we've completely revised that document, and we've, we're calling it a student incident report. So not only did we revise the title, but we went in and changed the questions, and I provided you a copy of it there. All of our school websites, so each individual school has this linked on their website, and students are informed and shown how to access that link to get to that document. So what we really tried to do was make sure that there was, we tailored the options that the students could select. We created a lot of open spaces within that report so that we really much wanted students to be able to come and report, or staff, come and report any issue that they were facing. So we wanted that document to cover anything from bullying to sexual harassment. We also, again, wanted to make it available to students who were bystanders and witnessed something, and they could report in that fashion. We also have implemented a program called the Second Step Curriculum. Mary Ann's going to talk a lot more about this in her presentation, but that has been working for the last two to three years in our middle school. And there's a lot of pieces in that curriculum around empowerment, personal responsibility, and healthy relationships. And we're also looking at the possibility of pushing that down to the elementary school, but again, I'll let her talk more about that. And she's also going to talk to you about our health curriculums that have been revised both at middle school and high school level to address some of these Title IX issues, and again, talking to students about healthy relationships and understanding appropriate boundaries. Another piece for students is that our Stonington police officer, or Stonington youth officer, he is onsite daily in our schools. He spends quite a bit of time at the high school. I know in particular, he is often at lunch at the high school and around in the cafeteria, so he's accessible to many of the students. So one of the steps that I've taken in preparing for this evening and also preparing for our work moving forward and specifically looking at bringing Safe Futures on, is I really wanted to sit and talk with a group of students. So I had the opportunity to meet with the SHS Admin Student Advisory Panel, and Ally was a part of that, and so I appreciate her participation in that. And I just went in and had a sit-down with them and really talked to them about these issues around reporting. We talked about connectedness to staff. We talked about reasons why or why not they would report something that they witnessed or something that happened to them. We talked about this both in terms of their interactions with staff and also about their interactions with their classmates. It was a really interesting conversation, and they were very honest and open with me. A lot of, a lot of the feedback that I received had to do with, centered around their unwillingness to report things and why they might not tell us. Some of the reasons that they gave me were they were maybe concerned about the academic repercussions of reporting. There was a student that mentioned that, well, I wouldn't know how that other student was feeling, so I'm not going to speak on their behalf without having their permission. One student mentioned, you know, being more interested in confiding in their friends than going to an adult. We also talked about the idea of being connected to staff members, and if that, you know, if you're, if you're more willing to speak with a staff member because you feel more connected to them, and the answer to that was yes, but it still didn't necessarily mean that they were going to take that step in going forward. So these are some issues that we really want to address, and talking with Catherine and her team, I was able to share information about this, the feedback that I received, and she shared that, they have shared that this is very common. This is what they're hearing in other schools as well. So we really need to work on how can we get our students to feel more comfortable to speak up. The other thing that they shared with me, which was really interesting, and I'm going to talk about this at the end here, is they said, don't, you know, when you give us assemblies in the beginning of the year and you send us emails that say who the Title IX Coordinator is, they said, in the beginning of the year, you know, we're kind of distracted and we're thinking about other things, and we don't necessarily focus on things at that time. So maybe there's other times during the year, or there's other forums. So I think Ally, I don't want to speak for her, Ally talked about doing smaller groups of students or having girls with girls and boys with boys. So they gave us some really good ideas about forums that we can use to talk to our students and have them be a little bit more receptive to working with us on these issues. So this is where, again, we're partnering with Safe Futures and looking at how we can really work on this empowering our students to speak up, this whole bystander concept. And they are going to be offering some opportunities, again, for our current students, graduates or staff to share feedback with Safe Futures, and that's going to be done actually at an off-site location. And so, again, I'll let Catherine talk a little bit about that, but we wanted to create a forum where students or staff could go and speak with them and feel comfortable doing so and sharing some of what the same conversations that I had with the students. And then, we're also going to have, and I know Catherine's plan is to possibly meet with that same group of students and talk about how we might be able to have Safe Futures do some actual work in the high school, because we want to make it accessible to the kids as well. One of the interesting initiatives that the Safe Futures team shared with us was this idea of the Green Dot Initiative. So if you Google this later, this is a bystander program that a lot of very prominent universities are implementing. So Harvard, Texas A&amp;M, UC Berkeley, and Con College have implemented this program. And it really is meant to give our students different ways that they can feel empowered in today's society with all of the pressures we have and social media and all those issues. It's meant to give students a way that they can intervene and help support a student that they may see is in an uncomfortable situation. So I know that Safe Futures is working towards some grant funding and some training so that they can come in and help initiate that. That's still pending, but that's something that we're really interested in promoting and moving forward with in Stonington. The next piece is something that the students had shared with me, is the idea that, you know, if you just tell us this in the beginning of the year, we tend to forget about it. So one of the things that we're going to be implementing, and again, this is kind of a task for our building administrators to implement, is this idea of report cards and reminders. So report cards equals reminders, which is a quarterly review of any policies that pertain to student safety, reporting issues. The whole idea of this is to continue to have this dialogue with our students throughout the year. I think often what we're thinking too is, if you're not having an issue with this in the beginning of the year, it's not really relevant to you, but suddenly December rolls around and you're having a problem. So making sure that we're continuing this dialogue, and this isn't just going to be through emails or, you know, handbook review. It can be through assemblies, it can be through advisory programs, but we're really going to create, and we talked about this today, that it's going to become pretty formalized like our fire drill mandate. So just like you check off that you do this many fire drills, we're going to be checking off that we're making sure we're reviewing all these things with students. We have a lot of issues with students related to social media. Sexting is a big issue, and those are things we need to constantly be working with them and talking to them about. And then, the next thing is related to our Safe Schools Climate Committee. So there's a tremendous amount of work that's going to be coming for the next two years where the state is going to be changing the template and plan for the Safe School Climate Plans. So this is a revision that the district needs to start working on, and we're going to be, and each school has its own climate committee, and then we have a district climate committee. So the high school is going to be adding student representatives to its Safe School Climate Committee so that all this work that we're talking about can be then embedded in those Safe School Climate Plans. Last but not least, our work with our parents, making sure that they feel included and understand our processes and procedures. They have received our electronic notification of Title IX policies and procedures. They also receive, and this has happened for many years, they get an email, electronic information about how to use that student incident report. So the parents are made aware of that anonymous reporting vessel as well. And again, I just mentioned that. The next thing, I just wanted to mention that last year, we did, we were one of like eight districts in the state that hosted the state dare officer in this room, as a matter of fact, and she was here last March, and that was an internet safety presentation, but it really spoke specifically to the dangers on the internet and provided that information to parents. We also, as I mentioned in that scope of the investigation, one of the key pieces was contacting the parents. So we're going to be making sure that they're informed right away when there's an investigation or the possibility of an investigation happening. We are going to, again, include our parents in these forums or these opportunities that Safe Futures is going to offer for people to come in and talk about these issues that they may feel uncomfortable coming to us about. Mark, the high school, they already have a parent advisory committee council, so he's going to, again, include a lot of this work with that particular council that's already in place. And again, we have parent representatives on all those school-based school climate committees. And again, that's due for a big revision over two years. And I think last but not least is, and some other great guidance that we received is, and this is always a challenge, is wanting to make sure, again, that our Title IX information is accessible to everybody. So we're going to be creating a separate page of our website. It's going to come under the department section, and so Title IX will actually have its own section of our school, of our district website. And L, the information, we're going to link the specific policies that relate to that. We're going to post the regulations, and we're going to post all of these electronic notifications so that those are always there, so you can do one click and have all of those resources to you. You don't have to be digging into the policies or going to different pages on our website. And this last slide is just a list of the resources and consultants that we've used in our, in all the information that I've shared with you, the initiatives that we've put forth, some of the changes that we've made. We've used these resources to help us in guiding us and moving forward. And as Alexa said, we're anxiously awaiting that report from the Child Advocates Office because, of course, we're going to be adding anything that has been left out that she would suggest. I've had an opportunity to read reports that she's provided to other districts, so I've glimpsed, not glimpsed those, I've read those. And so I think I have a good sense of what some of the feedback is she may provide, and so I'm hoping we're ahead of that. But of course, we'll be looking at whatever she recommends, and if we've left that out, we'll be adding that. That was a lot, I know. Questions?
That was a lot, and a chunk of, short chunk of time. That was impressive. Thank you very much. Are there any questions from the board?
Could you explain the difference between sexual harassment and sexual abuse? And does DCF respond equally to both of those?
So if you look at our actual regulation, and I have it here with me, it, for our purposes, sexual harassment in a school setting is conduct that is three different things. It is sexual in nature, it is unwelcome, and it denies or limits a student's ability to participate. So those are the, that's the umbrella under which the school operates. I don't know, I don't know what would then be constituted as abuse. I think that might be more of a criminal. I think that might be more of a criminal, of, you know, the police and DCF may label something as that. Maybe what you're getting at too is that repetitive nature of something. We are finding, I, I don't want to, I can't speak about specific DCF cases, but we are finding, DCF is, is somewhat liberal about some of these things, so, if that answers your question.
Is, so is sexual harassment illegal or not illegal?
It is illegal, it is illegal, for staff, for students, for everybody, right.
So...
I don't have a definition of sexual abuse in terms of our policies or regulations.
Right.
So I would, I wouldn't be the best person to distinguish between those two terms, we're, we're looking at sexual harassment.
Where is the anonymous report? Like, how would someone access that? If I wanted to do that, where is that?
So it's on every school's website and it's actually called a Student Incident Report. I know on the high schools, it's pretty prominent, right on the front page, I believe, and I think most of the other schools have it under the student page, so anything pertaining to students, you'll see that link right there.
Okay. I know a parent had asked about online, was there an online video or online resources or something like that for, I think, sexual harassment explanation? Have we found anything like that? I know the OCA was also kind of asking us if we knew of anything, because...
When I first started looking at resources for students, there was far less of that than there was for adults and staff, but I think that's part of that partnering with Safe Futures, and it's also going to steal, I'm going to steal Mary Ann's presentation because I think she's going to talk a little bit about the resources that are going to be used in her, in the curriculum that will cover that. Thank you. Any other questions?
Allison, thank you very much, I appreciate all the time you put into that. And next we have Mary Ann.
Welcome to Phase Two of the Title IX Presentation. Alexa has delivered to you your attractive blue folders that have some curriculum materials that you'll want to follow along as I go through this. ... and healthy and unhealthy relationships as well as sexual harassment. I want to give you some context to this from almost three years ago now, when I landed here, July 1 of 2017, because without that context, I don't want you to be misled that this work and curriculum hasn't been a result of anything other than curriculum revision priorities that have been set by the Curriculum District Committee. It's part of a larger body of work. Those of you who have been subjective to serving on teaching and learning for the last three years, understand the volume of work that has happened. But if I take you back into the Wayback Machine to July of 2017, when I arrived here, the district was enjoying some substantially improved academic outcomes at the elementary level, and that was due from a, several years of selection and then implementation and focus on research-based programs, specifically wonders for the reading area and Eureka Math at all of then the three elementary schools. There was a considerable amount of effort on, to provide technical assistance and professional development to support these implementations of these programs as we transitioned into the Common Core state standards, and success was being realized at that time. The other fork that I, or the other second bullet, I guess, that I uncovered as I started my work here in Stonington was, I arrived on the heels of the NEAST report being delivered to Mr. Fries. It has some very strong and clear recommendations specific to curriculum, and they included some of the following, that we were lacking a common format and template in order for curriculum to be developed and delivered and maintained for implementation by the, the teaching staff, and that also highlighted the need for a curriculum revision process as also priorities to be identified for curriculum revision at that time. So although the, the elementary folks in the core areas were pretty, sitting on a solid foundation, there was a lot of work to be done at the secondary level, which included the, the middle school. So in short time, in the fall of 2017, a curriculum, a district curriculum team was formed, a revision cycle was put into place, you can actually find that revision cycle on our website, so you can see all of the work that we have done since 2017 and all of the work that we still need to do, which is substantial. At that time, we were reacting to new frameworks in the science domain, Next Generation of Science. Some work had already been done with the implementation and development of curriculum in the social studies arena, and then the arts also had a new framework, all of which was influencing our priorities on what we had to work on in the forefront. At the same time, the health and PE teachers came to me and had, their, their curriculum is always one of the last ones, along with the specials, to be given any attention, and it was probably almost two decades then, it had, since it had not been looked at. And so we started some conversations about how to go ahead and revise that content to be much more contemporary and fitting. So we have some of it that's under construction still, that's ready from K through V, that's all ready to go to teaching and learning, so it has not been approved yet. The middle school curriculum, six to eight, was approved in October of 2019. The high school nine-ten course was approved in May of 19, and the Advanced Health and Wellness Course for grades 11 and 12 will go to teaching and learning before the end of the year. It's in draft form and out of the four levels is, is the least ready to go, the rest of it is all, all buttoned up and, if not approved, ready to be approved. What I have for you on the right-hand side of your folder, if you bear with me, you have, what I thought I would do is at least show you samples from five different, from three different grade levels, so one elementary curriculum, one middle school curriculum, one high school curriculum, and then kind of highlight for you, we're on this scaffolding process about talking and teaching about healthy relationships and about sexual harassment and about advocating for your friends when you see something that's, looks inappropriate, where to go and what to say and how to, how to get help, what it looks like at the elementary level, the middle school level, and then again, the high school level. So if you take a look at Grade Five, Unit One, you'll notice that these are developmentally appropriate. On Page, Page One, you can see the three units that are involved there for that particular grade level. On each of the documents, it will also explain to you how often the children have instruction in this particular area, that varies according to the grade span level and the frequency of, in which those classes meet. So in Unit One is four classes and instruction on how to advocate for each, each other. So if you turn to Page Two, you can see under the Big Ideas and the Essential Questions, what is being emphasized in these lessons at the Grade Five level, which is developmentally appropriate so that we can get more sophisticated in the children's understanding of this dynamic as we, we go up the grade level. So the big idea is that it's important to recognize when a peer may be in a bad situation and needs someone to support them. So it connects very nicely to what Allison was talking about with that Green Dot Initiative, about how do we teach kids strategies that will allow them to intervene in a way that they don't necessarily feel awkward or jeopardizing their relationship with their peer, but teach them how to do that and recognize when their, their peer needs help and what to do in that situation. Underneath that, you have identified what the kids need to know and be able to do at that particular juncture when they finish this unit of study. So at the end of this, the kids in Grade Five are going to know the situations that they can identify where a peer might need help, and then ways to provide a peer support, and that they're going to be able to identify the differences between healthy and unhealthy interactions by the end of that unit. On Page Three, you get an idea, and these significant tasks are a little bit misleading in, if you're not on teaching and learning, this may be a new term for you, but what that really is, is a suggestion to the teachers on how to plan lessons around the heart of the particular unit. In this one, it really is about the kids identifying their own particular personalized circles of support. When you're a Grade Five student, what does that look like? Who can they identify on their own individually as folks that they might be able to talk to and turn to if they know that they need help or a peer needs help? So that might be family members, teachers, other, you know, parents of friends, staff at the school, counselors, social workers, school psychs and the like. So that's a little bit what it looks like in Grade Five. Now when we graduate to the middle school and go to Grade Eight, our health teachers were so happy that this, the new science curriculum, Next Generation of Science standards, took sexual education out of science class and brought it back into health class, so that, that ping pong ball has been launched back into the, the lap of the health teachers. On Page Five, you have, let's see, this actually starts on Page, let's see here, so it's the sex education starts on Page Two, so this is the basics of human sexuality. Also, it talks a little bit about influences on sexual behaviors and decision makings in that particular unit, but as you go forward, you're going to see, on Page Five, again, an emphasis, an emphasis on kids revisiting their understanding of the differences between healthy and unhealthy relationships. Obviously, that's going to be a little bit more sophisticated in eighth grade as the kids are now entering into the dating phase. Infective verbal and non-verbal communication skills, refusal skills, you can see that the level of detail is getting much more specific here than it is at the elementary level. They're going to understand where to find valid health information and how to access services and resources, and they're actually going to be really introduced, really for the first formal time about the definition of sexual harassment. On the right-hand side column, they're going to be able to identify sexual harassment and distinguish it from bullying, and they'll also identify the steps that are necessary to take if sexual harassment, if they are sexually harassed or bullied. So this, again, dovetails right into the reporting that Allison alluded to, whether they want to do it in an anonymous fashion or if they want to turn to somebody in the school that they trust to get help. So that's in eighth grade. Again, significant tasks on Page Seven. The teachers decided to actually use some lyrics to a popular song on What Do You Mean by Justin Bieber to kind of launch this whole idea about language and different kinds of behavior, describing behavior as aggressive, passive, assertive kinds of communication. And then they take a look at the whole idea of what does it mean to say no and what does that, that verbal and non-verbal communication mean in terms of a situation where there's that unwanted behavior that's sexual in nature. So that's in eighth grade. And then finally, at the high school level, is your third document, Health Issues. They have, this mentioned in really two different units here in, in ninth grade. So if you turn to Page Three, the first, the first unit is on, this is a very broad unit, Infectious Diseases, Relationships, Diversity and Sexual Health. You're going to notice, this is the first time, on the left-hand side, the big idea is this is the first time that that whole idea of trust is going to be the foundation of any healthy relationship. This is a little tricky because we also, now that we've had a lot of professional development on what grooming looks like, and we understand now that that trust is, is actually the, what is being distorted in these grooming relationships. And then the essential questions that will be revisited in this particular unit are, how can I communicate, how can communication in healthy relationships enhance my personal and sexual health? So underneath here, now you're going to notice, under the, the students will be able to know and the students will be able to do, there's much more application of that foundational understanding of what healthy relationships are. You're going to see much more application now on that right-hand column about what students are going to be able to do, from decision-making, good decisions and poor decisions, from healthy and unhealthy relationships. They're going to be able to identify strategies to handle sexual pressures in a relationship, not only identify sexual harassment, but they're going to evaluate how information from families, schools and peers can be, be resources to them. So you'll notice, again, that the, it's much more sophisticated, they have a significant task, again, significant task, number three on relationships, discovering components about healthy relationships, including sexual relationships, and this is where, again, the sexual grooming is for the first time mentioned in this particular significant task where the kids are going to understand how these predators can be very, very patient for a long time, build their trust, and then break those, those what are called acceptable boundaries. So those are kind of the, the pieces of the curriculum. Again, I just want to remind you that two of those three have already been approved by the board, and the grade through kindergarten through five are ready to go to teaching and learning. I may bring those myself in February. Megan Breen has actually been working with the elementary teachers to craft those, but seeing how the next teaching and learning is two days before her wedding, I don't think she's going to want to actually be at that meeting, and so I'll, I'll present those on her behalf unless she wants to present them in, in March. On the left-hand side of your folder, you have another series of documents. You have an overview of a curriculum that has been, this is our second year, correct, Mr. Smith? This is year two of Second Step at the middle school level. Tim put it in place last year at both of the middle schools in, in, in hopes that we could get some routines and practices around advisory, the advisory block of time that would be consistent between the two middle schools, so when they actually consolidated, it would be another, one less change to instruction. It was brought on board predominantly because some of the teachers were very comfortable with having an advisory period and had no problem having conversations with children about all kinds of topics that were very necessary for kids, for young adolescents to have, and other folks were not so comfortable. So it was an opportunity for us to get a research-based program around social emotional learning that we could have guaranteed instruction and experiences for all children in the middle school, very prescriptive, similar components for each lesson with an online, a video component and scenarios and vignettes and activities for each teacher to do. You'll notice in that first packet, not only does it give you a, a kind of a description of how long these lessons take, there's 26 per grade level, they're about 25 minutes in length, but you have the calendar for this year by grade level on which, which unit is being addressed, which lesson at which date. It's pretty much weekly, except when we have these blocks of time where testing's happening, we have some abbreviations in the instruction for those particular, for those particular advisory classes. Underneath that, it says 2017 Middle School Program, I just wanted to pull that out. It's the same, it's the same curriculum in place for 2019, 20, and you'll notice that you have the program outlined by grade level, grade six, grade seven, grade eight, and within each of those grade levels, you have four strands that repeat themselves and they spiral as you go up the grade levels. So you have Mindsets and Goals for Unit One, Value and Friendships, Unit Two, Thoughts, Emotions and Decisions for Unit Three, and Serious Peer Conflicts in Unit Four. So if I direct your attention to Unit Two first, you'll notice these, this repeating idea of values and decisions that scaffolds up, up from grade six to seven to eight, and you'll notice that it's all about defining what a friend is, understanding friendships, understanding that friendships change, dealing with challenging friendships and negative relationships in grade, grade six, seven and eight. It gets more and more sophisticated as you go up, and it dovetails with the work that happens in Unit Four around peer conflicts. So these repeating themes throughout the grades six, seven and eight are recognizing conflicts, it's this whole idea of conflict resolution, challenging conflicts and resolving them, but in grade six, they, it really, the kind of key application process around that is the idea of what a bullying situation looks like. In grade seven, it scaffolds up to something a more, a little bit more sophisticated to understand, which is the gender harassment, how do you deal with conflict resolution around those kinds of conflicts? And then finally, sexual harassment in Unit Four at the eighth grade level. You'll also notice that the final lesson in Grade Eight is about issues and readiness for high school and those kinds of relationships that you may, we want the kids to be ready, ready and equipped for to handle as they go up to the high school level. If you'd like to see more detail about what those lessons are topically, you can go back to the, the, the following pages. On Page 10, you'll see the Grade Eight for the first unit, and then on the last page, Page 12, you can see what those last two lessons are in Grade Eight specifically around sexual harassment and high school readiness. So that's, that's what's going on at our middle school. Our elementary teachers, our kindergarten teachers actually use Second Step, they have for years. So our Grade One through Five teachers are looking at two programs, that would be either the Second Step program, so we would have this continuous alignment of social emotional learning curriculum from K through Eight. learning curriculum from K through eight. Or they're also looking at an alternative curriculum called Lion's Quest, which has a little bit more depth to it than the Second Step curriculum. They're looking at both, and they're going to be making their decision and recommendation to me in March so that we'll be able to purchase that curriculum for the next school year so that we'll have a formalized guaranteed program all the way up K through eight for social emotional learning specifically around this idea of healthy relationships and advocating for your friends as well as yourself in those situations where that's necessary. Our high school folks actually have an advisory in place as well. And they have a curriculum that is, is provided by Ed Excellence Curriculum. It includes a variety of topics that are appropriate for different grade levels. They're not necessarily health topics. I'll give you an example. So grade nine, we have lessons on stress management, study skills, and cyberbullying. In grade 10, goal setting, how to get a driver's license, interviewing and career pathways, as well as cyberbullying. Cyberbullying is the only one that cycles through all four levels. Grade 11, it has resume writing, financial aid, searching for a college. And then grade 12 is taking the SATs, ACTs, how to write a college essay, how to apply for a scholarship. So we've noticed that there's some absence of this idea of sexual harassment, of healthy dating habits, of looking out for sexual grooming. So I was talking with Allison and Mark, and we thought, boy, if we're going to be sending those reminders at the quarterly marking terms to say, hey, it's time in advisory to review the sexual harassment policy with the kiddos, go over the anonymous bullying, the anonymous, anonymous incident report, the student incident report, wouldn't this be a great time to do something very similar to what we do with our teachers in giving kids scenarios to go through and actually apply their problem-solving skills around scenarios that would have to do with sexual grooming, sexual harassment? What will you do? What would you say? What strategies would you have to help a peer or help yourself? And where would you go to get help? And what resources would you find available? What's on our website? What would you use in real time with our staff as well? So those will be under construction. It's going to be pretty easy to do because we can actually use our team modules for our beginning teachers and just retrofit those for the student and advisory. And we'd scaffold those up so that they would be different for different grade levels. It wouldn't be like the food pyramid and health class that you have to get every year. So. Do you have any questions about what we have in place and where we're going? The other, the other commercial that I want to give is to Ally and the student government, who I inserted myself last year and then started dragging Dr. Riley along to our meetings with the student government. And although not specifically related to sexual harassment, it is very much related to preventing sexual harassment or giving kids the skill set to help themselves get out of those situations. We had one, I don't know which meeting it was, Ally, but we got talking about the consolidation and the student government representatives at that meeting were very concerned about their younger siblings and their friends coming together in this new school and about possibly bullying and unhealthy situations and the stress of middle school is tough enough. You know, what can we do to help kids make that transition better? And that conversation resulted in the Link, Link Crew going down and doing some work with the kids as they went through orientation at the middle school, and it was warmly received and will probably in some way, shape, or form continue throughout the years. And then the other piece that grew out of that was a really frank conversation about our high school kids' experience as elementary school students. Everything from experiencing the start of eating disorders and school avoidance, school anxiety, to trying to field comments about, from the opposite sex about their bodies and things like that. And so what happened out of that conversation was Mrs. Hul and Mrs. Doh, along with Ally, started the Voice Club at, as a partnership between the high school and West Vine where the high school kids go down and actually mentor, because they are rock stars, we're just loud old people going wah, wah, wah. But they are the rock stars who can go down and do some of that character building. They also do physical fitness activities. I saw them doing yoga the other day, it was hilarious. Mindfulness, but they also have opportunities to talk in single gender groups about items and issues that are important to, to young girls looking up to their high school peers. And the gentlemen were very clear that they wanted to have a voice as well and have time with their gender and talk about issues that they faced in elementary school and middle school and high school. So I want to give the kids a nod because you're our best source of information and really have, it's a great partnership. And I know Dr. Riley and I, we're going, I think we're meeting this week. It's great fun because we feel like we can really help move things along quickly and be partners in that work. So thank you very much. Any questions?
You were talking about educating the students on grooming. And how much are we doing that for our, our staff and our administration?
So you're segueing into my next piece a little bit here, but we actually, and I'll, we'll just reverse the order, Catherine.
We can pull it back then.
We can pull it back.
I'll wait and listen.
Or we'll just rinse and repeat, that's okay too. We actually have been doing at our team, our leadership meeting, our leadership team meets every week. And we have a various kind of rotating agenda in the sense of what we do, but we have a professional learning community very recently and had done some reading on grooming, the mama bear effect, which was all new to us, and took a look at profiling and what kind of characteristics we should be looking for in that kind of relationship. So we did some professional reading on our own, but then Safe Futures came in last week. And we had the good fortune of having our entire leadership team together, which by that, by that I mean our instructional coordinators at the high school, our assistant principals, our elementary program coordinator, our vice, assistant principals and our principals and central office staff. So there are about 20 of us here. And I'm very thankful for the staff that Catherine sent out to, first of all, facilitate a restorative circle for us, which was our first opportunity to have a safe space to talk a little bit with each other about what the current climate is doing to our personal practice and the use of our time and our, our relationships with one another, and more importantly, our relationship with the board. So it was a really, it was a really positive experience, and we want them to come back and do more work with us because it was so valuable. And I won't go into any detail because it is, what was said there is in confidence. And then the second part of that workshop was actually going through scenarios with us and talking to us a little bit about the profile of a groomer, behaviors to watch, because there is no such thing as somebody looks like this or that. It's really behaviors that we should be looking for. And they did a couple of reenactments of vignettes, and then we had some discussion about that. We believe that's the beginning of the work that they can do with us to kind of bring us along. But we felt it was very valuable because it definitely filled in the void that was lacking in that two-day workshops that was, you know, offered and suggested by the State Department of Education. And the Office of a Child Advocate was very concerned about that gap being in the training. So I have no doubt that that will be addressed on the, in the future.
I forgot to ask Allison, but you may be able to answer this. Appropriate boundaries for current employees, for new employees, you said that's part of their initial training. Are we doing that same thing for our, our employees who are not new?
So they're going through, they have to take the sexual harassment training anyways, but we actually have been having conversations with the building principals about how are you going to go through some of these scenarios on an ongoing, we're actually going to have it on our leadership agenda this week. What's the best and most effective way to have those conversations and do some of those same scenarios with staff that's in place? Is it better to do it as an entire workshop or should we sprinkle it throughout the year just like the State Department and the Title IX training is saying, don't just do one big workshop for the kiddos, you need to revisit it throughout the year? So we're going to have a talk about that, like what, what our building principals think would be most effective for the teachers. Because it may be a parallel model that the kids are going to have, or it may be something different. We just haven't landed on that yet, but it is, it is on our radar.
Thank you.
Because our faculty meeting, your professional development, you have an opportunity to embed that.
Oh, good. Okay.
So that would be everything that we're recording. You know that the recording is not just for students, but also for parents and staff that need to talk.
And just, and just so you know, these modules that we keep talking about, or these scenarios that we keep talking about for team, for beginning teachers, these are scenarios that all are authentic to Connecticut that actually went across. Nancy Puglisi, who was then the Bureau Chief of Certification, they all came across her desk as situations that happened in Connecticut schools. So they have some relevancy. It's not just something that Mary Ann Butler made up. These are real scenarios, synapses. They're short, but they have in there all the troublesome behaviors that will make for a good conversation about, you know, what, what could, what implications does this have for the student and what implications does this have for the teacher?
Thank you. Did anyone else have questions before I move it along? Ally, did you have any questions?
Next, we have our representative from Safe Futures. We're very lucky to have her tonight and squeezing us in. I really appreciate it, Catherine.
Thank you. Thank you for having me here tonight. I'm Catherine Verano, the Chief Executive Officer of Safe Futures. My title changed not that long ago from Executive Director. And I know some of you, I met some of you recently, and I just want to shout out to Heidi Simmons, who is here and has been a longtime volunteer with Safe Futures in our programs with our, some of our residential clients who are very isolated and traumatized tremendously. And she's been very creative and supportive with them, and thank you. So Safe Futures has been there. We will celebrate our 45th year next year. We were formerly called the Women's Center of Southeastern Connecticut. And about 10 years ago, we changed our name because we don't only service women and children. We serve men, we serve teen boys, we serve teenagers, and no one wants to just walk into a place called the Women's Center. It was not working well for us. Last year, we served 7,053 victims in southeastern Connecticut on domestic violence, sexual assaults, stalking, and trafficking. And we also taught 6,605 students in 31 schools on restorative circles, violence is preventable, healthy relationships, teen dating violence, and many other school-based programs that started about 28 years ago by Anne Wernow, who recently retired, started the programs. I've been with Safe Futures for the past 27 years. I was in executive banking prior to that, and my best friend and peer was brutally murdered by her husband, and we were all friends, and I never saw any signs. So domestic violence, sexual assault is unfortunately a very private matter, and I think we can all work together to help bring it out. So as Mary Ann mentioned, we did a restorative circle with the leadership team last week. And I had four key, three key staff here. One is our Director of Counseling, who is also a survivor herself of childhood sexual violence. One of our educators, our coordinator, and also Marie, who is a retired state trooper from Massachusetts, past board president, and, and worked in special crimes with victims of domestic violence and sexual assault. So we had a great team here, and we had a great group from what I hear that they worked with. Restorative Circles, for any of you who don't know what they are, it's emerging social science that studies how to strengthen relationships between individuals as well as social connections within the communities. Basic premise of restorative practices is that people are happier and more likely to make positive changes when those in authority do things with them rather than for them. It's done in a circle where there's no start or finish, and everyone has the equal amount of time. And I think, you know, I'm jumping around here a little bit, but I think it's really important. One of the things we discussed with the Advisory Committee is to do an advise, to do a circle with the Advisory Student Council, I'm not sure of the title of them, for their feedback. Because we can come up with, we have some ideas, we can come up with many programs and many ideas, but if they're not on board or they're not going to participate, it's not going to do anything. So I think that's our first next step is to have that circle with the students to come up with the, you know, we have an agenda, we'll throw it out to you, but we'd love to hear what you want. We did do the training, which I thought was, was great. I don't know if Mary Ann wants to add anything. I can't share what staff has shared with me. We are blanketed statually under the Confidentiality Act, just like we are with our clients. But it might be a good idea if you mentioned what you felt you got out of it, being a
So it was, first of all, the circle started, and I'm not going to break a confidentiality circle started with if we could be any superhero that we wanted to be. It was a nice icebreaker to kind of get us all feeling relaxed because we were going to talk about what's going on right now with our work specifically around some of the challenges that are in place. And so it was really, it was, again, it was an opportunity for us, I think, to, to pull together as a team and to realize what an amazing administrative team we have and won't change that for the world. So I think it was an opportunity for us to show support for one another in a very safe place. And then also get some information. So it was a nice, it was a nice balance between group care and then also an opportunity to actually do some new learning. And I think we all, everyone stepped away with saying, okay, I actually did learn some new things today, which was the name of the game, right? And so we want to kind of keep both of those facets of our work with Safe Futures moving forward.
Thank you. Okay, so we talked about meeting with the leadership team. Former students, we're looking to do some one-on-one, whether in groups, whether one-on-one, whether it's off-site. I think it's really important if we get the connection of a former student to build that, that safe place for them. They may not want to talk to us. We always have to be sensitive to, they may not want to reach out to us. But we also have a coalition, Connecticut Coalition Against Domestic Violence. We have a hotline, we have, they can instant message, they can text. So we want to offer any resource to anyone to reach out to us, to have that conversation, give them their voice. We also are going to do onsite sessions for students. If the student is underage, they have to have an opt-out. Parents would have to be notified ahead of time because we are also mandated reporters. If a minor discloses to us something that happened to them, we are all mandated reporters of childhood abuse or homicide-suicide. Our counselors, we plan on having staff here. And again, a lot of these are in the working stages, and we want to know what the students are looking for. We're, with one other school we're doing, we have a staff there, it's a counselor, it's not one of our educators, and they're there one full day a week. We have a male there one half a day and a female there another half a day. So we're trying to make it open to all students to feel comfortable. We did a meet and greet first so they get to meet the counselors, so it's not just oh, here, there's someone sitting in that office to go talk to you. A little overview of who we are, and that could be with parents, that can be with students, it can be with the, the whole body of the school. Information and resources again about our coalition, ourself, who we are, what we do, our confidentiality is key. I think that's the most important thing. We know that students have their own language. And again, being able to offer a texting line, I can be sitting in that meeting over there and texting and getting advice, and no one knows about it. So I don't have to break any, I don't have to tell on my friend, or I don't have to feel uncomfortable that I'm having this situation. And I think that's about it. Okay, always, also, we wanted to offer to the board a restorative circle. I think what we did was really effective. I think everybody has a voice, everybody needs a space to feel comfortable and voice their concerns in a safe, healthy place. And like I said, it's a work in progress, so we are still planning things.
This is just the beginning. We know you wanted probably a laundry list of things, but we want to make it thoughtful and useful and meaningful and not just arbitrary events. We don't want to have something for the high school kids and nobody show up. So we're going to be really leaning on that ASAP group of Mr. Frees's to come up with some innovative ideas. And I know based on the conversation you had with Mrs. Van Etten that you are not shy about saying what you think, which is really what we need. So we appreciate that. And we'll look forward to what structures you can come up with to help us to, to do this work. And it won't be a one, this isn't something that's going to end this year. Do you want to tell about what we were whispering about? About Green Dot? We just made this up, Dr. Riley, so bear with us.
So I've been looking for grants for Green Dot. It is an expensive program to bring in, but very worthwhile. We did it at Connecticut College. I was on their advisory council, their community response team. And when you were talking about avenues of bringing it in, your sports teams, it's a great way to have a Green Dot. great way to have a Green Dot event, maybe your football team, and everyone wears green shirts. But we're talking about bringing it as a region. Again, many people are facing challenges. And I think Green Dot has been around. They brought it down. It used to be just for colleges. Now it's available for high schools, and they're actually working on curriculum for middle schools. I think it would be wonderful if Southeastern Connecticut brought this here regionally. And I'd love to do that by this summer. So I'd love to work with you and a few other schools and bring it here.
We could host, and I'll be happy at the roundtable, at our Learn Roundtable, to even mention it to my colleagues. It may be something that folks could think about using some of their Title IV money even to defray some of the costs if they don't want to use fundraising with sports teams or whatever. But there's a lot of avenues, I think, that we can look at to absorb the costs.
Could you explain a little bit what the Green Dot program is? I know I've talked a little bit with Mary Ann, but I think it's, I don't know that anyone else really understands what that program is.
Okay. And I will send information to everyone, or I'll send it to Mary Ann. It's a curriculum. So Green Dot, first of all, it trains educators, it trains administration. It sort of changes the culture in the society of bystander intervention. What is that? Because I know even myself, sometimes I hesitate, should I say anything? You know, you're maybe in a store and you see something. What it does for the kids, though, the students, it helps them to learn ways to intervene without being called out or without being, what's the word?
The rat.
The rat, right, okay, or the snitch. So a very brief example is teaching the students how, maybe you're at a party and people are drinking, and now there's four of my friends there, and I know Mary had too much to drink. And now I see her going off in the corner with John. And I know what's going to happen. I know Mary doesn't want this to happen, but she may have had too much to drink. So how can I intervene without embarrassing myself, without embarrassing her? I may just walk up to her and bang right into her and spill my drink on her. Now I have to take Mary. So you're diverting, right? And you're laughing, but it's as simple of that as that, but it's also much larger than that. And I'd love, Darcie Folsom, who is the educator on Green Dot, worked for Safe Futures and Prevention for about 10 years, went on to Connecticut College as the Title IX Coordinator. And she introduced Green Dot to Connecticut College, and our team brought it in there. She is now working solely for Green Dot. And I would love to get her to come out and talk to you or have a conference call with her because there's so much more to it than I am explaining.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Any questions?
Yeah. I did. You'd said that you were going to reach out to former students. I wondered how we were going to advertise or communicate that that resource was available.
Well, first of all, that's one thing, is I would need at least one name of someone who would be willing to talk to me. So I don't know how I would get that person. Because I would like to talk to that person and see how they would like to do it. You know, how would they get other people in? Because that's just putting it out there. What's the best way to get it out there?
That's what I wondered.
Right. So I think having at least one connection is critical, and I can work with them directly. I also would designate a few certain staff at our agency to be the people that they could reach out to if they didn't want to talk to me, and again, are our coalition.
Great. Anything else? Questions? Okay, thank you.
So I guess we are, is that, Catherine, are you all finished? So I could open it up for our three community members who are here. If they have any questions, I'd love to hear them, or information or insight.
You all know, I'm Norine Keppel. I sent all four of my children through Stonington Public Schools. And I just want to applaud the fact that you have put together this agenda tonight. What I deplore is that there are not more community members here. I came in with the big, I guess now disillusionment that this place would be packed. And so that brings us to a question, you know, how do we get the community involved? And more directly to your curriculums, I'm wondering, on the level of curriculum, when the kids are being taught these programs, is there a link back to the parents? Because we know that kids can listen in a classroom, but a lot of them are going to go back and they're going to talk to their parents. And if the parents don't know what they're talking about, we're missing that whole complete circle. And maybe by communicating to the parents, we can hold another night like this and maybe have more chairs filled. Thank you.
Thanks, Norine.
Thank you, Norine. And I am very thankful that Frank came here tonight from the local community TV station. So he is recording it, so we can put that up on the website. And hopefully, we can have more people who were extremely busy with their children tonight and needed to be elsewhere, they can view it online. Are there any other questions or insight or input? My email address, agarve@stoningtonschools.org. Please feel free to send me any messages if you think of things once you leave. Thank you very much for all who came tonight. I really appreciate it, and any other insight will be greatly appreciated. Thank you.